Thank you. Emergency exits are either side in the back. Any correspondence that can be posted has been posted. At this point, we are going to turn it over to Callie Mann, who is our student board member, joining us for the first time at the dais. Welcome, Callie.
Hi, everyone. My report today covers a few different areas, like my board member training and the continuation of the cellphone policy, and then student feedback about certain topics. Board member training. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to be a part of the ex officio student board member training. This development, this development meeting was attended by student board members all across New York State and was hosted by the New York State Education Department. I was able to listen to panelists and guest speakers, as well as a former student board member, who is now a freshman in college. I learned a lot from this meeting, such as ways to better connect with the student body, and also how to best utilize my position to create meaningful change. Cellphone policy update. Now that we're about a month into school, I figured an update on student response to this policy would be helpful and informative for the board. From what myself and Dr. Walsh have seen, it seems like students, for the most part, have adhered to the rules, and we have seen a definite decrease in phone use, which is really nice. It seems like student focus has also definitely improved with the implementation of this policy. Past events in Spirit Week. This past week was Spirit Week, which kids seem to really enjoy, but one thing I wanted to highlight was the toy drive set up by the SGA. We had bins lined up in the hallway so that students could donate board games and toys to give to children fighting pediatric cancer. All those donations were given to Cohen's Children's Center, and we seem to have a bunch of super fun donations, which I'm sure the kids will love. Student voice. Lastly, I really made an effort this month to focus on student voice. I made a Google form, which I sent out to a few of my multi-grade level classes, asking a few questions about things students would like to highlight, or things that would be a beneficial change, and got some good responses. A bunch of kids brought up supports in the building, like homework helpers and the Math Resource Center, saying that these, saying that they use those supports all the time, and they've been super helpful. Kids also said that the amount of diverse clubs we have at Southside is something that they really thought should be highlighted. When asked about any issues they would like brought up, the vast majority of students who answer talked about the auditorium AC. Mr. Gavin and I had a very clarifying conversation, which helped me better understand the challenges of getting this new AC, but I know it was really important to a lot of students that it gets brought up, and that they wanted to, and that they wanted the board to continue to look at options. I know that there are lots of people who are here tonight to voice their concerns about this issue, and I hope that this meeting is an opportunity for students and the board to work together on improving this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Callie. Great job. Thank you so much. I think you have a game to get to? Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. You did a great job, and we're very proud of you, and we're honored to have you representing us and all of the students. Thank you, Callie. Good luck in the game. On that note, student voice is always important to the board, and I know we have some students here this evening, so are there any students here that would like to come and address the board?
I have been involved in the arts program in the high school since the first day of my freshman year. Since then, I have found a community and a home within this program, and that is why I am here to talk about the issue with HVAC system in the auditorium. Today, we have a small percentage of students and families here that are not only in favor of the AC being replaced, but are affected by it as well, as it is a school, district, and village-wide space. The auditorium is used for concerts, show performances, club activities like TED Ed, meetings, and village events like Miss Colleen's dance recital. While I understand to a point the concerns and issues about it getting replaced, I wanted to highlight why this should be a priority. I am in the auditorium for about 20 hours a week, play production, a 40-minute class period every day, a two-hour rehearsal after school every day, and a six-hour crew call each Saturday. Specifically, I wanted to focus on crew call and play production, the play production class. I have been in play production for the past four years, and it is something very important to the members of tech and theater. For the 40 minutes in the class, we work on building the set and preparing things for the upcoming rehearsal. I understand that it is a possibility that the show will be held somewhere else. However, I do not believe this is a great solution to the issue. If we are not able to build the set and hold the production at the high school, then what's the purpose of play production? This is a class that we signed up for to specifically build sets. In addition to this, we hold crew calls on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is a necessary time we need to get the set done in time for the show. If we are moving the show to a different location, we are taking away this opportunity and essential aspect of the show. For example, if we were to hold the shows at the middle school as proposed, we wouldn't be able to have the type of set that we strive to reflect the work that we put in. We also would not be able to have the necessary stage lighting, which is a crucial part of the production that ties it all together. And I understand, you guys, you brought up the point that we would be able to get help from maintenance people. However, one of the most impactful parts of the program is that the sets are very student-run. There's nothing more meaningful to me than looking at the set and knowing me and my fellow peers worked hard every Saturday perfecting it, and it is something we are not willing to sacrifice. As a two-year Drama Guild officer and previous stage manager of Newsies, I've seen up close how essential the technical and creative aspects of the shows are. By taking away our space, you are taking away the details of the shows that are important to me and any others. These shows and this arts program are a home and community to many, and I personally wouldn't even be in Southside High School if it weren't for finding this program. So I hope you can make finding a solution to this a priority for the betterment of many students in the district. Please consider what I've had to say when ultimately making your decision, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lucy.
Good evening, administration and members of the Board of Ed. My name is Regan Zellis, and I'm a senior at the high school. On behalf of all the students here tonight, we thank you for having us and giving us this opportunity to speak on a topic we are all passionate about. As a Drama Guild officer, I be theater and music student, chamber singers and As a Drama Guild officer, IB Theater and Music student, chamber singers and triad member, I'm here to advocate for a better solution to the problem that is the HVAC system in the auditorium. While I am aware that aged infrastructure can break and that we are faced with budgetary constraints and bidding processes to fix the system, I believe there is a way to find a solution that better serves the community as a whole. Ideally, we would like to see a new system installed by the spring. I hope that when making these decisions, the board, building administrators, and staff will consult with the students and faculty directly affected by the issue. As a senior who has been involved in the arts for the majority of my time in the district, performing in the high school is a result of years of hard work and dedication. It means something to perform on the high school stage. The facilities here reflect our level of talent and professionalism. Our senior performances are the equivalent of our peers' county and state championships. Just as you would not expect those games to be played at an elementary school field, we should not be expected to pare down our productions, concerts, and performances at a lesser venue. We should be performing in a facility that is comparable and matches the importance of the events for our department. As you can imagine, failure to do so can send the wrong message to our arts students, making them not feel heard or valued and affecting their mental health. All the reasons mentioned above can also result in people not wanting to participate in our program. As you can see by the number of people in this room, this is a beloved program that we want more and more people to join and be proud of. Once again, thank you for your time, and I hope we can work together to find a suitable solution.
Thank you, Regan.
Hi, my name is Molly Abreen, and I just first off want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to us, and also thank you, Mr. Gavin, for meeting with us earlier, as I thought that was really informative. I just want to speak on behalf of the middle schoolers, because I think that they have a real, I believe that they deserve a real voice in this situation, because the real possibility of this situation is us relocating, and I just don't think that is a feasible option, specifically for the middle schoolers who have their own show going on. I feel like if we were to have shows or have rehearsals there, it would uproot the entire system that the middle school has in place. And I also, as a kid who has participated in sports, have seen how the bus schedule can get really messed up, and especially playing JV tennis, our bus schedule wasn't always prioritized, and buses would come up to an hour late, and that could really mess up the rehearsal schedule. So I think, thinking about the middle schoolers and what they have going on there, I would feel awful if pushing us into the middle school would uproot what they have going on. Once again, thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Molly.
I am currently a senior at Southside High School. Over the past four years, I've been an active member of the Drama Club and Theater Department. I've performed in every spring musical, and I am currently in rehearsals for our fall play puffs. I'm speaking to you tonight, not only as a student, but as someone who has devoted a great deal of time, effort, and heart into the performing arts at our school. I'm here to address the serious concern that directly affects our ability to do what we love and do it safely, the lack of functioning air conditioning in the auditorium. Right now, the auditorium is hot, and air circulation is poor, the space is stuffy, and we don't even have an audience there yet. If you've ever attended one of our shows, you know how physically demanding they are, singing, dancing, acting, under bright lights for hours with many people onstage and backstage. This isn't just about comfort, it's about safety, equity, and respect for the teachers, students, and staff who invest countless hours creating high-quality performances that respect positively on our entire school community. We've known that this is an issue for a while. In fact, at a fifth grade graduation in June, the AC wasn't working, and a student fainted on the bleachers while under the heat of the lights. It is three and a half months later, and we still have no immediate solution. If this were happening in a classroom, the main officer, Jim, I truly believe it would have been resolved already. This tells me that it isn't a matter of capability but of priority. Theater is not just an extracurricular activity. It teaches teamwork, discipline, communication, and confidence, skills that extend far beyond the stage. The space we work in should reflect the value of that experience. But this doesn't only affect theater students, it creates obstacles for every event that relies on the auditorium throughout the year. Rehearsals, performances, assemblies, concerts, ceremonies, dance recitals, meetings, when it becomes unusable, the entire community feels the impact. I also want to specifically address how the situation affects our center stage program, which features many of our special education students. It is a large-scale production involving peer volunteers, aides, and the community members, and is one of my favorite things about Southside. But if the air conditioning isn't fixed and rehearsals must be relocated or canceled, it would be extremely disruptive. Adjusting to new spaces, shifting schedules, and managing additional transport needs all pose real challenges. When the auditorium is unavailable, it hinders their ability to participate fully and comfortably. Center stage students should be able to shine on the stage at Southside High School. Seniors in Drama Guild deserve their chance to perform in their final shows on the high school stage, where they began as freshmen. IB Theater students deserve to present their self-directed plays on the high school stage, and our chorus band and orchestra students also deserve to have their concerts right here at Southside High School, on their own stage, in their own school. This matters. The Southside High School auditorium isn't just a stage, it's our classroom, our lab, our studio, and for many of us, our second home. I understand that fixing the AC may be a large-scale project, and I recognize that the budgeting process is complex. But what we're asking for is unreasonable. We're asking for basic functioning space that allows us to do what we love safely. Delaying the issue or constantly relocating activities doesn't solve the problem, it only prolongs the inevitable, while complicating logistics and adding more transportation costs for the district. Every year, the RVC community is asked to support our school budget, and they do, because they want to retain the high quality of our programming. This situation directly impacts the quality of our arts program in a negative way and should be remedied. It is my understanding that emergency funds exist for situations like this. When a school facility becomes so overheated that students are fainting at graduations or unable to safely rehearse or perform, that's not just an inconvenience, it's a safety hazard and a disruption to our education, and is a problem that needs to be solved. Please make repairing the auditorium air conditioning a priority. As students, we take pride in representing our school, and we ask that our school take pride in supporting us too. Thank you for our time and for listening.
Thank you, Charlotte. Are there any other students that would like to come up to address the board at this time? Okay. I want to say, before I turn it over to Mr. Gavin to address some of your concerns and questions, just on behalf of the board, you are always our priority, and the arts program is supported, and it is something that we are addressing. I just want you to know that on behalf of all of us, okay? So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Gavin to address what he can at this time.
Okay, so first, we went over a lot this afternoon, but I'm going to go through it for everybody so that it's on the record, okay? So I want to begin by clarifying the current condition of the high school auditorium air conditioner. While the existing unit does circulate air, it definitely does not cool the air, meaning that during the warmer weather, the space can become quickly uncomfortable for both performances and for audiences. Over the past few weeks, we have been thoroughly exploring solutions to keep the space usable. After careful assessments, our district architects and HVAC specialists have advised us that the current unit is not repairable, making any temporary solution merely like a stopgap. We have explored options such as, like I told you guys before, like installing wall units, but those come with an estimated price tag of about $250,000 and would not be a viable long-term fix. We also looked at other options like bringing in cooling vans and portable units, which proved to be ineffective for a space as large as the auditorium. And we have made a small tweak, just so you know, I think I told you guys before, to the ventilation in there, so it has been cooler when it's cooler outside. So today was one of those days that it was, I believe it was like 72 degrees when you guys were in there this afternoon for rehearsal. That is usable, it doesn't mean it's going to be usable under the lights and with all of the kids and the people in the audience. So the core challenge is that the current system is 25 years old, and we haven't had replacement parts manufactured. The cost estimates, as I told you guys before, range from about $400,000 to $1 million, depending on the different bids that we get. And if we proceeded today, even if we ordered it right now, the equipment would still take time to order and manufacture due to supply chains. We have continued to consult with manufacturers and engineers to explore different options. I have another meeting again next week. And we are also looking at our capital budget this year to see if there's a way for us to work on that this year. While the district, I know some people had talked about the idea when there were some emails to the board about reserve funds. While the district does maintain reserve funds and currently holds a fund balance of approximately 3.5%, it's important for the entire community to understand the ramifications of using them. Utilizing reserves and fund balance for this project could reduce our financial standing and put us at what is known as financial stress, specifically if we utilized reserves to do that. That could push our fund balance below than the recommended 4%. This reduction in financial standing could compromise the district's flexibility to respond to other unforeseen emergencies and maintain stable financial operations. It's important to note that we have not made, like I told you guys before, the kids before, we have not made a decision on whether or not we're going to move the fall play yet. If we've been able to keep cool weather, and the auditorium's able to keep the temperature lower, we will keep the show at the high school. But like I told you earlier, I do not want to do that if it's going to be 87 degrees in there, and it would be uncomfortable or unsafe for all of you. The other component is we're working with Ms. Mark and our play production and drama teachers to make that decision. One of the kids asked before, about how long would it take for us to make that decision? Like I told the students, we're about two to three weeks out from making that decision. So we're hopeful that with cooler weather, that we were able to do that. I spoke to some parents after the meeting as well. We're also looking into trying to make sure that, A, we get different types of ventilation to blow the cooler air in, and we're working with additional things to put on the roof to kind of speed that up or force cooler air in as well. After reviewing the options, this is what I would like to talk to the board about. We're continuing to work with additional vendors to secure the best possible price for a permanent replacement. We have reached out to local government representatives to locate additional funding for the project, and I will tell you, Judy Griffith has been a great asset in this particular endeavor. She's been awesome. So for all of you out there that are RVC constituents, she's been great. We are also reaching out to other local officials as well that we're trying to secure additional funding. The process would be like this. We were going to come back after evaluating a couple of our options over the next two weeks, and at the next meeting, prior to the next meeting, I will meet with the students and meet with any drama parents that want to meet, so I can give you an update, and then at the next meeting, we'll have some additional steps for everyone to take place. As I told the kids, and as Dr. Walsh told the kids, we recognize how hard everybody works, we recognize that this is a special place for all of you, and more importantly, we recognize that this is your opportunity to shine, and we want to do everything we possibly can to make that moment for you a special one. If, now, for the fall drama, there's no way we're going to get a new AC done. So I told you guys that before, so we have to evaluate as the ventilation system exists right now. So if we need to move this to the middle school, we will do everything we can, including, that's why I mentioned adding additional people, like some of our custodial staff and some of our maintenance staff to help with making sure that our play production design is capable to be moved and moved it over. But that decision won't be made for about two to three weeks. We anticipate cooler weather coming forward, although Monday, of course, is going to be 81 degrees. But we're confident that if possible, we will be able to keep that fall play, if everything breaks our way, that fall play would be at the high school auditorium. The May events and June events are more problematic. We know that in that particular time, that if we don't have an AC solution put in place, we know that that will be an unbearable temperature in May and June. June particularly is very, very hot. You will get 80-degree days for the entirety of the month of June, and that would make the auditorium stifling. We have worked with Ms. Mark and Dr. Walsh to make sure that if and when we have to make adjustments to all of those special events that happen at the end of the year, we will do so. I know that some people had said, like, you know, is the gym AC? None of our gyms are AC. So we don't have, the middle school and the high school gym does not have AC. So I know somebody had asked if that was a possibility to use for like some of the special events, like concerts and/or award ceremonies. They're also not AC. The only difference with the gyms is that they have windows to the outside. So if it's cooler on the outside, you can bring the ventilation in. The auditorium, as it exists here at Southside High School, is in the center of the building, so I don't have the ability to have an outside wall to ventilate to. So we had talked about the idea of like putting in like wall units, like 15 to 20 wall units, like five on the stage, 15 in the back, and have it blow through. The ventilation and venting those units would be the problem. So when we talked to the engineers about that, that was one of the other problems as well. But we have been exploring every option that we possibly can, and that's because we know it's a priority for all of you and for all of you. And that comes, not just from me, that comes from the board, our high school administration, Ms. Mark. We know that this is an inconvenience. The great news is, is that when I talked to the drama parents after the meeting today, that they were so wonderful in extending their help, that if we did need to make some adjustments, that we would mobilize, as they said, the drama parents to try to make sure that all of that, all of the work that we would need to do if we did need to make a switch, would happen smoothly and as completely as possible. So my promise here to you is that we will continue to update you through the entirety of the process. So we'll have more meetings in the music room, so that you guys are updated all the way through. And then my promise to the parents is to do the same thing. So I have a meeting, I think, for the week of the 15th with the drama parents that we will extend to everybody, so that if there are questions, we can give you every update that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. And just to note for all of you, our next meeting is October 22nd. So in addition to the meetings that will happen in between with students and parents, Mr. Gavin will give another update at our next board meeting, and that's October 22nd. Okay? Thank you. Anything else in your superintendent's report, Mr. Gavin?
I think that covered it.
Okay. We have an acceptance of a gift this evening?
We do. We are so grateful to our ED Foundation partners for providing us with an additional gift. In this particular case, this grant is to support our new dance program, where the students are going to get a chance to work with a dance, I don't want, it's not a choreographer, it is a dance something. But I forgot the name of it, but it wasn't a choreographer, so it wasn't a choreographer. But somebody with a dance culture, a dance expert or a dance professor. But they were really great with that in terms of like speeding that through. So as always, ED Foundation is another one of our partners that provides the district and our students opportunities for unique experiences.
Thank you very much to the ED Foundation, as always. Can I have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Turning to policies, item for discussion, tonight at Stage 2, we have 5676 Privacy and Security for Student Data, Teacher and Principal Data. Okay to move this?
Yes, all 13 pages of it.
Okay, thank you. Currently at Stage 3, we have 5650 Energy, Water Conservation, and Recycling of Solid Waste. Okay to move this for approval at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. And 5674 Data Access and Security Access? Okay to move? Okay, thank you. Opportunity for superintendent, Mr. Gavin?
Okay. So I'm pleased to share an update on the powerful partnership between Rockville Center School District and the ED Foundation, an organization that continues to play an essential role in advancing our shared mission for the future of our schools. Our new mission statement is a commitment to collaboration with families and community partners to inspire excellence, ignite creativity, and empower students to lead with imagination and purpose. The RVC ED Foundation is an example of how that vision can come through in terms of action. Through their generosity and commitment, we've been able to move beyond the limits of the annual budget each year and bring innovative ideas to life. The foundation's support has opened doors to projects that foster critical thinking and prepare our students with skills they need for the future. From advanced STEM equipment to cutting-edge classroom technology, we're really appreciative for all the work that ED Foundation has done. The success of the ED Foundation depends on the passion and involvement of our community. Whether you are interested in volunteering your time, making a donation, or joining the foundation as a member, there are many ways to be part of this work. Your support directly fuels innovative programs and helps ensure our students have the experiences to grow as creators, thinkers, and leaders. On behalf of the Rockville Center School District, I want to thank the ED Foundation, its donors, and its volunteers for their commitment to our school and our children.
Thank you. Opportunity for board members, Ms. Messier?
Thank you. Five years ago, I decided to run for a seat on this board because I could no longer ignore the inequities in our schools. I know what it feels like when a district does not fully recognize or support the unique needs of your child, the worry, the disappointment, the lingering fear that your child's potential may not be fully recognized. I also know the difficult choices family makes, countless hours, boundless energy, significant financial investment to provide their children with meaningful educational opportunities. And yet, too often, these efforts are met with frustration as the system falls short. The auditorium's current condition directly limits our ability to deliver on the district's promise of a high-quality, equitable educational experience for our arts students. The space is essential for our music and performing arts students, not as extracurricular add-ons, but essential components of our school's identity, culture, and reputation. As a designated school for the arts, we proudly highlight our commitment to artistic excellence, yet the absence of a fully functioning auditorium exposes a stark disconnect between our stated values and our current reality. Families in our community invest significant time, energy, and resources to support our arts programs. They sponsor events, organize fundraisers, and contribute both materially and emotionally to ensure these programs succeed. They do so with the expectation that the district will provide the foundational support necessary for these programs to thrive, including safe, functional, and inspiring spaces. When the auditorium is unavailable, we will keep the show at the high school. When the auditorium remains unusable, it not only limits students' opportunities for creative expression and skill development, it implicitly diminishes the values of the family's contributions and the commitment they have made to the school community. In effect, it erodes confidence in the district's ability to honor the promise it has made to every student, to provide equitable access to experiences that foster talent, creativity and personal development. I understand that repairing the auditorium is a major, major financial undertaking and one that can affect us now and potentially into the future. These considerations are real and they are serious, but in my opinion, the long-term costs of inaction far outweigh the immediate budgetary impact. Investing in this space is not just maintenance, it's an affirmation that we value our students' talents, their commitment and the contributions they bring to this community. Frankly, the decisions we make now will demonstrate whether we are truly committed to supporting all students and enabling them to reach their full potential, or whether we are willing to allow barriers to remain in place. To our students, I am proud of you for coming tonight, for raising your voices and demanding what you deserve. I've been so incredibly impressed with all that our theater and music programs have done. I've worked in two other school districts, both also designated school for the arts, and I've never seen anything that rivals the productions that you put on. Literally feel like I could be on Broadway. I cannot explain to you how impressive it is. Um, I want you to know that you are seen, that you are heard and that you are valued. Finally, my comments, I'd like to take a moment to sincerely apologize to members of our community who are not able to be here this evening because of their religious observance. Your voices matter, your presence is valued, and I deeply regret the timing of this meeting has made it difficult for you to participate. Please know that your perspectives remain an essential part of our conversations and decisions. Thank you.
So, um, I'm going to start by thanking you all as well for coming, and I know that you represent not only yourselves, but you represent a much larger community of students in all different aspects of the arts. Okay? And, um, I agree, you should be absolutely proud not only of being here, but of getting up and speaking so eloquently and advocating for what you feel is like essential to your character and your high school experience. And I agree that it's, as a board member, it's hard to sit here and have to say, I don't know if we can give you what you want. Okay? All of us sitting up here, we're not here because we want to say no to kids or to parents or to families. We're here because we want to say yes, and we want to support the things that you love and we watch you and we come see, I've seen, I'm looking at people in the audience, I've seen perform on the stage in plays, in musicals, in concerts. My kids have been on the same stage that you guys have been on. I understand that this is something that is so important to you. Okay? And I also think to myself, should, should we at some point last January, when we were making budgetary decisions, said, hmm, we have a twenty-five-year-old air conditioner, maybe we should replace that. Okay? But at the same time, we were, we had that, we also had major structural leaks at Riverside that needed to be fixed and that were causing structural damage to the building. And so, what I've learned sitting here for the years that I've been here is that you're often asked to choose between two things you don't want, or multiple things that you don't want to have to choose between. So it, none of us sitting here want to say no to you. We don't. Okay? And I think you're right to grieve what you may lose. For the seniors who looked forward to what you thought was going to be your senior year on Southside High School stage, absolutely, that's like a really emotional, hard thing to accept, that it might not look the way that you thought it was going to look. Okay? And we will do our best, absolutely, to rectify the problem. Okay? But I am, one of the things that I think is the best that has come out of this is meeting with Mr. Gavin, and listening to what you have said is important to you, that is the way that we know what you value, and then that helps us try to find solutions with you and with your parents that will be, if not the ideal that you thought you were going to get, will at least be something wonderful and celebratory and feel fantastic in the moment, even if it's different than what you thought it was going to be. So, throughout the process, like I, I wish I could say, yes, you're going to get what you want. I don't know if we're going to be able to say that, but what I absolutely encourage is to be part of the process with us. If there are things that are important to you that we can try to implement, and it might not be on the high school stage, but maybe there's a, like, someone I spoke to talked about your end-of-year award, award ceremonies and how they're not going to feel the same. And I recognize that. So maybe we together find a, a different option that could be just as special. So I'm, I'm just asking you to come together with us, absolutely, feel your emotions, be upset. I'm, I'm frustrated for you, I'm frustrated for us, I'm frustrated for my kids who are going to not play their final concert on the, you know, my, my daughter's a senior, she's not going to be on the stage, just like many of you, for her, for her wind ensemble concerts potentially, but in the end, it's, it's not because we don't value what you do. And I, I know that, maybe it doesn't feel that way at the moment, but, but honestly, we recognize how wonderful you are and how talented you are, and at this stage, we'll continue to work, but the best we can offer you is to, is to come together and try to help us find solutions that you guys can live with and be proud of and be happy with. The only other comment I wanted to make is I, I actually still have not met Callie because the meeting that she was here, I missed because I was away for something else. I know she's not here, but I just wanted to say how nice it was to hear her comments and how wonderful I think it is to have her as a liaison between our students and us. So, thank you for coming.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Gruner. Dr. Downing?
That's where I will pick up. Wanted to thank Callie Mann for coming as her first, giving us her first student board member report. We are so glad to have a student regularly, uh, up here with us, having the perspective, and I appreciate the collecting that she's doing to get as many student voices heard as possible, and that's clearly what this group in front of us right now is doing, a collective act of advocacy. And you are very brave to come out, and it is much appreciated. And from the bottom of our hearts, if it's important to you, it's important to us. And I hope that you come away from this meeting knowing that we are stronger when we work together, and we pledge to do that, to find a solution that works under the circumstances that we have. You have our, our full cooperation and support in any way that we can work together to make the situation better. I really do appreciate hearing firsthand and, and hearing the passion and the love that you have for each other, for your chosen artistic expression, for your school, for your stage, for your facilities. It's, it's really been heartwarming for us to hear that, and I want you to know that you are heard and, and very much valued. Moving towards the community, um, partners that have had their first meetings by now, sponsors of the arts certainly, all of our PTAs, SEP, Booster Club, Ed Foundation, all of these volunteers do so much great work to create the enrichment opportunities for our students, so thank you to those groups as well. I will also add on to, uh, Mr. Gavin's note that the Ed Foundation Fall Grant Cycle opened today, and so grants are available to apply for from now until November fifth. Um, I wanted to thank our school leaders for inviting us to join the nine-eleven remembrances and a special acknowledgement to the really large turnout of our students who participated in this year's Tunnel to Towers Run last weekend. Many of our teenagers, the morning after homecoming, it's really such a meaningful experience, and it's a way to connect learning and history to our very super-local community and families, um, to be sure that we never forget. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again to all the students that came up to speak and those of you that are here that did not come up to speak, but here to support the cause. And like Mrs. Gruner said, we know that you're just a fraction, a representative of a lot, much larger group, and we'll continue to keep you updated and you'll keep, keeping us updated and, and the communication will go on. Okay? Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to opportunity for other visitors besides students that would like to come up to the mic. The public is reminded to address questions or remarks to the board through its president. It's requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. The public is asked to state their name and address when they come up to the mic, and please limit comments to three minutes.
Hi, Peter Sharoff, four-two-eight North Village Avenue. So I need to give a little background, and then I have three questions about the situation. The background is this. I, I'm, I'm disappointed that when we had a bond a bunch of years ago, we didn't look at things like HVAC in the auditorium. It was before many people were here, so I'm not blaming anyone. I'm, I'm disappointed that it sounds like there's some money in the emergency fund, but we're afraid we may need to keep it for other priorities. That also means that this is not a priority. And I know that everyone will shake their head at that, but that's kind of what I heard. And the reason I'm disappointed, and this is the context, so I'm on the other side of this. When I went to high school, I was in a high school where we were in a gym. We had the track around the top, and there really weren't many lights, and there were barriers to being part of the arts, and so I wasn't part of the arts. When I got to college, I became part of the arts. I was on stage, I played piano, I was in the rafters, I directed, and when I went to business, those were the skills that made me successful. Right? Yeah, the classroom stuff helped, but getting out there, running a theater, being involved, those were the skills. And so yes, my heart goes out to the seniors who will get what they want, to your point, but also for the freshmen who maybe would have tried, but if they have to bus, if they have to get past barriers, they're not going to invest their time in this. And once you don't do that, well then sophomore year you don't, and junior year you don't, and suddenly, high school has ended and you haven't had the experience. And so I do understand, it's a choice between multiple difficult things. And so I, I'm not suggesting we have a magic wand and can solve all of it, but I do want to make sure we are moving heaven and earth to try to solve it because we're a wealthy community, and it seems like something that we should be giving to kids, and even a year that is lost can have a multiplier effect on the kids. So with that, three questions. One, um, if you had the funds today, could it be done by the spring? I, I'm mindful of supply chain issues, sourcing, getting contractors, could it actually be done?
Mr. Gavin?
It's most likely a, like, two-to-five-month process to get, to get it. Now, I don't know about the install piece, because once you do actually order it, it's manufactured and then it's delivered, you have to have somebody who's, who's ready and available at the time it's delivered to install the, to install the system. So there are only a few people that actually do the installs, so some of that is logistical. So I would probably say if we could write the check today, you would probably be looking at two months at the very earliest before anything could happen. Four to five months be, at the latest. That's probably a safe, Jackie, am I probably close on that?
So it's fair to say then if we don't make the deci, if we can't find the funds and can't decide to do this in the next month, it can't be done in time?
Well, that's, that's one of the things we're trying to give you guy, um, we're going to give an update at the next October twenty-second board meeting. So by that point, we'll have made a decision on the fall play, because we'll, we'll know what the weather's like and we'll know what that, that all entails. And then there is the, by that point, I will also know, I've been working on a number of different funding sources as well, um, so then I'll have a better and more clear, um, uh, picture to present to the public.
And then, as you say, it's in the middle of the building, big space, as it starts getting hot, that gets very hot. Do we have concern that other air conditioning units around the building are going to start to break because there's an additional load?
No, they're separate systems, so one, one is not necessarily linked to another. So, for example, the units on the far side, on the far side of the building have no tie-in back to, um, the auditorium.
No, I'm, I meant more the, the average temperature of the building will go up because that room is getting very hot.
Um, do you think that's?
We can, we can.
Usually in the auditorium, it's kind of like a self-contained kind of unit, so I don't want to tell you no, but I also don't want to tell you yes, because.
I just want to raise it because of the law of unintended consequences?
We can follow up with that.
Yeah, yeah. I can follow up with that, Mr. Sharoff.
You wouldn't want it to cascade through, because then you got a much bigger mess.
Yeah.
Um, and the last one would be, how can we, there's a lot of passion in there, right? How can we help? Should we be calling our state senators? Should we be calling Judy Griff? How do we help get this resolved in the next month?
Judy's been a big help. Don't call Judy Griffin, she's got us, she's got our back. Okay? That's number one. When the time comes and I'm able to make all of those things public next, in the next couple of weeks, if there's anyone I wish for, for people to write to, I'll definitely make that public, um, even if it's a thank you, even if it's just a thank you to people. So, um, I will tell, I will say this, Judy Griffin came and saw me on Wednesday, and she was fast and immediate and did a great job.
Okay, well, anything we can do, please let us know. And separately, thank you for all the shout-outs to the RVC Ed Foundation. As one of those folks, you know, we do a lot of stuff and we really do appreciate the support we get from the board, from the administration, so thank you.
Likewise, thank you.
A few notes just off the cuff. Um, one, I'm a little bit concerned that this didn't come up during the walkthroughs that happened at the end of the school year. My understanding is that during the senior nights in June, it was unbearably hot. I was just in the auditorium a few weeks ago, and it wasn't as hot as it is in June, and it's really uncomfortable. There's a reason we're in this room probably and not the auditorium. So I'm, it's concerning that, that we have walkthroughs, we talked, you talked to every school about the walkthrough and that this issue didn't come up and it wasn't raised in the walkthrough. This isn't just for the drama kids, for the music kids, this is, again, there's, there's no programming at the high school now, because you don't have the space to have the programming. I don't think you're going to bus all the high schoolers to the middle school for high school programs. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe that's an option. I'm not sure what, what the plan is for that, that wasn't even discussed. We also talk a lot about mental health in this district, so much about mental health in this district. This is, there is only joy at a show. If you walk out of a competition, you walk out of something, there is a team that lost. My husband said it so well at the end of the, of the musical last year, there is only joy when those children walk out of the room. There is, in, in the entire outside, all there is is joy. You're taking that away from the children, from, and, and the community from this, from everybody in the room, you're taking that away from the children. I, there, there has to be a, a good solution for everybody. It really doesn't feel like this is being put as a priority. You can say it as much as you want, but it really doesn't feel like you've made it a priority. So, thank you.
Hello, I am here tonight representing the Rockville Center Sponsors of the Arts as I serve as the president. Over the past few weeks, many families and students have come to me concerned about the broken air conditioning system in the auditorium. Mr. Gavin, I do appreciate your rapid responses to my emails, um, and I appreciate that you took them as a priority to contact me several times. As you know, we've submitted an eleven-page petition on behalf of the families and students of the arts in Rockville Center in support of fixing the air conditioning in the auditorium at the high school by this year. The families and students of the arts, um, and in the Rockville Center School District feel that they deserve more. Performing on a stage is hard, um, but performing on a stage where the temperature is unbearable is even harder, and performing under the uncertainty of where you will perform is even worse. I realize that we have a beautiful theater in the middle school, as I have a middle schooler currently, but for the high schoolers, especially those who are graduating, um, this potential change of having some of their performances at the middle school is extremely disappointing. This also affects some of our IB classes, such as IB theater, play production, IB music, and our newly added IB dance. The students and families have expressed to me and the other board members of Sponsors of the Arts that they feel that they are not a priority in this district. Our students of the arts should be praised for their performances, not only at the school, but in the community and in, um, events such as playing on the porch, um, parades and Memorial Day, and also, um, singing the National Anthem at Little League. They are a family, and, um, I am always very impressed with how they hold themselves. When I decided to be, become president of Sponsors of the Arts, I did this, um, as a favor to one of my friends, and I can't stop because I'm just so in love with this group and I want to see them succeed. You. You see here firsthand the passion in this room. I am so proud of all of you for staying here tonight and for standing up for yourselves. I applaud you for coming out on a Friday night especially, and as a holiday for some of you, I'm sure. Don't give up, we will fight for you, and we will support you, always. And I hope that we can keep the lines of communication open. I am willing to help set up meetings with parents, and, you know, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susie McGuire, I'm at 51 Dartmouth Street. We are a Rockville Center Theater family. We began our theater experience in Time to Shine. Kathy Smith and her team brought us on a magical journey to Neverland, inspired us to look forward to the friendships formed at Red and Blue, and introduced us to witchcraft. The seed had sprouted. My family went on to middle school, where the seedling developed as we engaged with the gangsters and gamblers of the 1920s, and took an adventure through the swamp to rescue a princess. Or was she an ogre? We spent summers at Ustand in Wheatley Heights, forming unions with newsboys and learning when a chess match may be about more than the game. After two decades in the school district, we look forward to being part of the sensational theater program that we had heard about and experienced at Southside High School. When people asked us if we were considering private high school, we were shocked at the suggestion, believing that Southside High School provided us with the best opportunity to prepare for a top-notch college program, which would lead to a career in theater. Southside High School would nourish our theater schools so that we blossomed. But now, it seems like the future may be at risk. I appreciate the various concerns that others have voiced tonight. I am going to focus on one concern: co-seeding IB Theater Arts I and IB Theater Arts II. For those who do not know what that means, and I didn't know that before this year, that means you take two classes, and you teach them at the same time, in the same classroom, with the same teacher. This seems as challenging to me, me who was a math whiz, as teaching Algebra I and Algebra II in the same classroom, at the same time, with the same teacher. By their very course descriptions, IB Theater Arts builds on and refines the skills that are learned in IB Theater Arts I. In IB Theater Arts I, juniors spend the year creating their theater portfolio as they prepare to apply to college programs. They are learning about the core components of the IB program in theater. In IB Theater Arts II, seniors are completing their assessments for IB. One project requires all of the seniors to work together as a group to create an original piece. Under the IB rules, juniors are prohibited from participating in this project. But it's in the same classroom, at the same time, with the same instructor, working with two groups. How does that work? The second project requires each senior to create an original solo theater piece. How can a teacher adequately supervise all of those individual seniors creating solo pieces at the time that they're teaching the skills to the juniors, at the same time, in the same classroom? You may not know, but these projects are not just about acting. They are about lighting design, they are about set design, they are about the effect of acoustics. How can they do that without a theater? When I listen to some of the trustees' comments tonight, there is one element that I think some of the trustees may have missed. This is not just a hobby or an activity for some of these students. I would never expect the district to tell students who were planning on being future scientists that we just don't have a lab for them in senior year. Sorry, there's no lab for you this year. It's not a hobby for some of these students. They are prepping for careers in the theater field, using their theater skills. Please don't prove me wrong for selecting Southside High School. Thank you.
I was prepared, but I'm not going to read what I wrote because I don't want to be redundant, so many people brought the same issues up. So I really just want to highlight a couple of things that maybe need to be spoken about again. My daughter Lucy was already up here talking about the impact that she, that not just the performances, the play production side. Right now, she is in a play production class, and instead of getting ready for the fall, for the play, she is cleaning a basement. And that is how she is spending her days right now, which is terrible. They should be, they should be getting ready, have the set ready, know where the show's going to be, and doing what the class is meant to be used for. I do want to say she began this in her freshman year for CLU, where she learned to use all these amazing tools, things that we don't have in our house, that she'd come home and say, "I use this saw, that's blah, blah, blah," and was so proud. And she took these skills, and the very next summer went on a mission trip where she was able to work with Habitat for Humanity, building and repairing houses. And so, she took the skills that she learned here in this amazing class to, not only that summer, but she's gone back every summer and is going back again this year. So I was so proud, and I was able to say to the other people on the mission trip that she learned this from her school, from her play production. Moving this, moving, I understand the issue and why it may have to move to the middle school, but that takes away this major part. Yes, the performance can go on, but this play production part will suffer. It will suffer now, being in this hot basement, cleaning, which, again, as I said, they should be building sets, they should have been building sets on Saturdays already, and it's being pushed off. So I really just wanted to take a moment and really just show the impact of not just everybody, I mean, we all say, I feel like I sit with movie stars when I'm with these kids, because I'm like, oh, you are on this, and there are amazing performances, all the amazing things that go on, but there is all this behind the stuff. They learn how to set up lights on lightload day. She spends 14 hours setting up these amazing light fixtures and programming them, so there's just so much more to it than just the performance. Also, listening tonight, what I've learned is, this could be done, but we're choosing not to because there might be something, a more important issue that comes up, which is heartbreaking. I came in here tonight thinking it wasn't possible, but what I've learned tonight is that it is possible if we make that choice. If we make a small sacrifice, it could be possible. So for that reason, like, I actually am a little more discouraged having, hearing that, basically. So I thought, coming in here, that it was, okay, it can't be done, but now I hear it can be done, we're just not doing it. And I appreciate everybody speaking to the fact that you want it, you hear it, but if there's a chance to do this, why aren't we? I'm also wondering, why didn't we start in June? When the child fainted and we knew it was an issue, I understand, I don't know of rumors, I know that people say this and that, but I heard that adding some Freon to the system helped give it life for a few more months. Maybe at that point, we should have said, whoa, 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 this could be a bigger issue. Why did it take till October to really take this seriously? Thank you.
I can assure you, we are exploring all the possibilities, and that's the point of coming back, so I don't want to say that we're doing it or not doing it tonight, right? But I think the point is that we're really trying to explore all the possibilities that we can, and we're going to update everybody at the next meeting, okay?
I understand. I guess my point, my point was, why weren't we already there months ago?
Right, we, yes. At our walkthroughs, we typically address issues with the head custodian and to answer someone else that it came up earlier, and Mr. Gavin and the administration, so it's something that was on our radar, still is on our radar, obviously, but we don't want to promise something that we can't deliver. So please understand that we really are working as a team to try, to try our best to come up with a solution, okay?
Okay.
On another note, Mr. Gavin, at our next meeting, can you also please give us an update on the play production class and the IB theater class, differentiating between years one and two?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm not here to talk about the AC. I wish to address two issues about security and safety in schools. First, I'm not sure if the board is aware, but St. Agnes School recently announced its hiring armed guards. I am a parent of both a St. Agnes child and a Southside High School child. I fully support armed guards. Armed guards are the best deterrent to school shooters, and it is also the best and really only way to defend if attacked. In addition to St. Agnes, apparently at least 20 Long Island school districts have or are planning to use armed security, including Smithtown, Half Hollow Hills, Massapequa, Farmingdale, Kings Park, West Islip, and Riverhead. As more and more schools decide to use armed security, the ones without it inevitably become more vulnerable in terms of being a soft target for the people who plan and carry out school shootings. For this reason, I'm asking if the board is considering armed security, and is it on their agenda? My second point on school security and safety relates to the recent incident in which a kindergarten child with autism went missing and was able to leave Riverside Elementary School unseen until they arrived home. As the mother of a son with autism, who was prone to running off in his younger years, this was my biggest nightmare. It never happened to my son, and I had assumed, perhaps naively, that this was because there were adequate safety measures in place. I was shocked to hear at the last meeting from a mother of another child with autism that this elopement is not an isolated incident, and that it happened to her child on numerous occasions. Marginalized was the word she used to describe how she felt her concerns were treated. Children with autism are more prone to wander off and are also more vulnerable because of their disability. A recent statistic I read was that 80 autistic children have wandered and died this year alone because of their autism. A 15-year-old boy with autism was killed on Southern State Parkway shortly after the Riverside incident after he wandered from his school. Frankly, all parents in this district with a child with autism need to be assured, in the most transparent way possible, what safeguards are in place to prevent further elopements, and what has been done to address what clearly went very wrong at Riverside. Thank you.
My name is Scott Clodfelter, and I live at 396 Locust Street in South Hampstead. I'm the parent of one Southside graduate, and now two high schoolers. I am a member of the Sponsors of the Arts. All three have been involved in the arts programs in the school district in one way or another: visual arts, choir, band, orchestra, and especially theater. I have always been impressed with the quality of the arts education our children get here and the experiences that they take away. I am, however, not impressed with the solutions proposed to move the productions outside of the high school this year. Our students deserve better. It's my understanding that the district knew last year that the air conditioning in the auditorium was at the end of its life, and yet it was not included in last year's budget. That leads me to the question that what other big-ticket items are also being swept under the rug, especially when it comes to the arts? I understand that the plan is to move all productions, rehearsals, and performances to the middle school. I also understand that we're going to know within the next couple of weeks whether that's going to happen. That same middle school just had its own end-of-life roof replaced when I had a student there. The same middle school that many of these kids just graduated from and mentally prepared and excited to do their shows in the high school. This last-minute plan really leaves me with nothing but questions. Number one, busing. We're a family that depends on the busing system to get our own kids home from school activities. Will there be buses to get the kids from the high school to the middle school and then home again afterwards? Number two, parking. There is no parking for the seniors, or anyone, honestly, at the middle school so that they can drive themselves. And as somebody who's spent the last eight years picking up and dropping off from the middle school, I can tell you that the neighborhood cannot handle additional parking and traffics and high school students and parents coming and going every single day. Number three, security. The team at the high school is used to managing the students coming and going. The middle school team and the middle school situation is set up for middle schoolers. Ticketing for the shows. The tickets for the shows at the middle school are not sold in advance, and there are general seating at the door, which means that you have to show up early to get the seating of your choice. Rehearsals. Rehearsals for choir, band, and orchestra concerts happen during the school day. Will students be bussed back and forth, further impacting their school day even more? Play production and play practice. The theater kids practically live in the auditorium for the last few weeks leading up to opening night. Honestly, that's part of the fun for them, but is the middle school prepared for that? The audiovisual and student camera operators. Will the more advanced technology that's available at our high school also be moved to the middle school for each event? Our students deserve better. On a separate topic, I am against having armed security guards in the school district.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin, I'm going to ask that you address those points if that becomes a possibility. So in our update to the community, if in fact we have to move to the middle school, can you just make sure that we address all of those concerns? I'm also going to ask Mr. Gavin, you or Ms. Rehack, to just quickly walk us through the budget timeline in terms of the calendar year and when we start budget discussions and, right? Right now?
Oh, right now? Oh, okay.
Ms. Rehack? Yeah.
So we start looking at our building walkthroughs, the first ones at the beginning of the school year, and then we do them again in the beginning of January, and they get incorporated into the budget. Usually, we have that list by the end of January, early February, and then the budget has to actually be formally adopted and approved by the board in April to be on a May ballot. So when we were looking at capital projects, well, yes, the air conditioner unit was old, it was in working condition. We had no, no knowledge that the air conditioner was going to stop working when we were doing the budget. When it did break in June, we did, they told us they just needed more Freon, and that's what we did. So there also was no knowledge that this was going to be a continued repetitive problem when that started over the summer and it broke again. So, and since then, we've been working on this, but capital projects also do need to be voter-approved, so this is part of the issues and things we're looking at and that we're coming back to over the next few weeks, because it's not something that you can just go out and do.
Thank you so much. Sorry, go ahead.
Nathan Stangy, 436 Laurel Road. I was not planning on saying anything. I do just want to say, you know, really just blown away by the eloquence of our students and advocating for themselves, it's tremendous. I do think that if there is, I think everyone understands that logistics and supply chains and tariffs, et cetera, I mean, it is what it is. If it can't be done by a certain date, people understand it's an impossibility. I think if it's... I think if it simply comes down to a matter of not tapping reserves that exist because of perceived negative effects that, you know, could affect us, this is an extraordinary situation and circumstance that requires extraordinary measures. And I think a great percentage of the community feels that way and will see it as unacceptable to not tap those reserves. I also just want to quickly voice, you know, horrified by the prospect of bringing guns into our school for security purposes. You know, we have an epidemic of gun violence in this country. More guns are not the solution. You know, there are many, I just pulled up, you know, one study here where armed guards, you know, researchers examined 133 school shootings and attempted school shootings between 1980 and 2019. At least one armed guard was present in almost a quarter of those cases. Researchers found no significant reduction in rates of injuries in those cases. So strongly, strongly against guns in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kristin Claudfeldter, I live at 396 Locust Street. I have three students, one graduate, as my husband said, and two current students in the high school. I don't think I can really be more eloquent than the students have been, but I do want to touch on a couple of things, perhaps for folks that are not here, that are at home. I think more so than this being a drama issue, I think this is a transparency issue for me, which I feel like is a word that we toss around an awful lot every year or every other year when elections pop up. And I feel like this issue right now is just a perfect example of the same thing that I have been saying for several administrations through several superintendents. I get daily, multiple daily updates through Parent Square about all kinds of issues. And I cannot understand how this is just one example of something that I had to hear about from fellow parents and students rather than hearing it from the trusted members of the board and the administration, who I have good communication with, I thought. If the AC broke in June, even if we got it working again temporarily, if it definitely went again in August, I can't understand how it took us this long to be having a real conversation about it. And I don't think it's a drama issue. I think it's an issue of us having a working auditorium, which is much bigger than the theater kits, even though God bless them for showing up tonight and being the ones that are paying attention and speaking up. This is going to affect awards, it's going to affect assemblies that I've already had. I showed up for the ninth and 10th grade parent night, it was very uncomfortable. And I have the same question that was raised already about the purpose of the walkthrough and how much good it's doing us if we're not tackling these things at the time that we see them. And and really what it comes down to as a broader question is what our contingency plan is for things that we know are at end of life, like the middle school roof. We pushed that off for I don't know how many years with leaks that were causing issues throughout the rest of the building. And I have a home that's over 100 years old, so I get it. Like in the Northeast, we're all operating in school buildings that are way older than we'd like them to be and things break. But I think communication could be a heck of a lot better, number one, and I think our planning needs to be different and it needs to be better. I certainly understand you saying that the AC is not repairable. I get it. I'm not thick. I can hear that and I understand it. Had we acted in June or even in August, what I wonder is how far we would be by now in terms of the process that we discussed with RFPs and bidding and install, installing it and purchasing it. I understand the cost, it being somewhere between $400,000 and $1 million. What I'm hearing is that we have a reserve fund. What I'm not hearing, the reason why I showed up tonight was to get answers and to get more information as someone who's on the outside as a taxpayer and wants to understand. What I'm not hearing is how much money we have in the reserve fund and I'm not hearing a good reason for us not using that money. All I'm hearing is that we're not comfortable with it. So I want us to talk about how we get comfortable with being uncomfortable because this is a bigger issue than what we wanted to acknowledge it as initially. If it has to do with the Comptroller's report, then I'm not really feeling the concern because we've been there before, we've shown up on a list before with 16 other school districts at the very least, who were all considered to be at some level of risk. And we survived that and we repaired that to your credit. And I assume that the reason why we did it before was because we deemed it to be important, although I don't recall off the top of my head what the reason was before. So I think that needs to be part of the discussion. I think it's worthwhile to acknowledge for those of us who aren't a part of the decision-making process, what, when did we do it before? Why did we do it before? Why does this not warrant that same sort of behavior? My understanding of that process is that there isn't any independent action taken on the part of the Comptroller's office. It's just that we get listed on a piece of paper that says that we aren't the best financial risk. If there's more to it than that, then I think we do need to understand that in order to respect your decision. I don't, what I don't understand and what I don't accept is that it's going to take another two to three weeks to make a decision about how we're going to handle everything, where the production is going to go, where the other assemblies are going to happen because we do have all these questions about busing and schedules and classes, how we're going to sell tickets, all of those things. So I think coming here tonight really leaves me with more questions than it gives me answers and that's the part that leaves me very disappointed and very dissatisfied. As trustees, I'm asking you to consider using the reserve fund and to explain to us why we should or why we shouldn't because we trust you to be our representatives and to make those decisions. I'm also asking you to make a commitment to that as a backup plan at the very least because we know we have this other option that we've explored and we think it's promising, but it's not a guarantee. So in light of what I said already about contingency, like I want to have an A plan and I want to have a B plan and I would like to have some certainty about what that is. Again, I think this is bigger than the EC. I also think it's bigger than the auditorium, quite frankly. I I think there is a larger message here about what's going on with the arts program and whether it is a program or whether it's just a cool production that everybody gets excited about and a cool class here or there. I was told at some point that the high school students, which was very exciting to me, were going to be helping to produce the show at the middle school. And I thought that was a fabulous idea and somehow that was going to be educational for them, that they were going to be coming up with a script and helping to produce it. And now my understanding is the middle school has gone from two shows in a year to one show. So on top of what got discussed already about play prod and about co-seating the IB classes, it sort of feels like the program is shriveling and that's really concerning. So at the very least, I would be asking for a lot of transparency about this process going forward because I don't know how many high school parents are really aware that this is happening. I know we're aware because our kids are in the auditorium every single day, but I wonder how many parents of seniors or parents of children who are getting inducted into honor societies know that we may not have a functioning auditorium, depending on what time of year we're talking about. I appreciate everybody taking the time to truly consider all the options and and making, make the difficult decisions. I don't envy you guys, I do appreciate you and and I hope that you really give it the thought that we think it deserves.
Thank you. Ms. Rehack, do you want to just walk us through?
Yeah, we just want to talk about what reserves are.
The reserve fund and the state comptroller's office, please, thank you.
Sure. So the district does have a few reserves. Reserves, when they're set up, they have to be used for their intended purpose. One reserve the district does not have is a capital reserve. It's something we've been talking about before this air conditioner broke. It has to be voter-approved for us to establish it, so it's something we've talked about putting on the ballot. It would be a second proposition to establish a reserve specifically for things like this. So we do not have a capital reserve that we can tap into for this. We have reserves for other things, TRS, ERS. We do use reserves to balance our budgets. We already have reserves scheduled to be used this year to offset the budget for TRS, ERS. So you can only use it up to the extent that you have that expense, that you have the TRS expense or ERS expense. I cannot use that reserve to offset other expenditures and a capital project. As I mentioned before, capital projects do have to be voter-approved. Now, there are different ways we can be creative and things that we've had approved in the past and those are the things that we're talking about and looking at and it just, we we just need more time looking at that and that's why we say we're going to come back in the next two to three weeks.
Can you just clarify TRS and ERS?
Sorry. Those are the retirement systems, teacher retirement system and employee retirement systems. So there are different reserves that districts are allowed to establish. Some of them for the retirement systems, unemployment, workers' comp, capital, those are different ones that districts are allowed to establish reserves for. Some of them have statutory limits on how much you can have in it and some of them don't. Some of them are a little more loosely worded and capital reserves are the only one they need to be voter-approved, like capital projects. So we couldn't just establish one anyway, that does have to go on a ballot to establish one, but something we have been talking about and is part of our strategic planning that we've been rolling out this year.
Thank you.
I just had a really quick question. Is the October 22nd meeting, are we allowed to make public comments or is that a public work session?
That's a public work session.
So we can't make any comments on this?
Right, so we will, Mr. Gavin will update in the superintendent report, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And he will meet with, like he said, the students and the parents before that meeting. We're just going to update the public and the community at that meeting.
Okay.
But you, you will all be informed of that ahead of time.
All right, thank you.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Galvin. I'm at 275 Maple Avenue. I don't want to go over everything that everybody already said about the AC. I'm sure you've heard it all. I just want to see the same level of effort put into fix this AC that these kids put into the performances because they work really, really hard and I really am really, really pissed. There's no excuse for this, there really isn't. The amount of taxes that people pay, the budget going up every year, the fact that the AC is 25 years old, I mean, what lasts 25 years? It's ridiculous. And to back up what Sarah said a little bit about armed security, nobody wants guns in schools. I get it, but I mean, we're at the stage of the game now where shootings are a regular occurrence. The only thing that stops a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. So I think it's time to really consider it. I mean, these are our kids. What are we going to do if something horrible happens here? We can't say should've, would've, could've. And that's it.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing on the armed guard issue. At St. Agnes, there's going to be two guards. The one inside is not armed, the one outside patrols the perimeter. Now, I know for a fact from another teacher who works in, I think it's East Islip or West Islip, that's, that's what they have. They have not armed inside, they have armed outside. To say that having an armed guard outside contributes to an epidemic of gun violence makes no sense. We have cops coming to the schools for various incidents and they are armed. To say that presents some kind of threat to gun violence makes no sense. It's a reality, there's a Second Amendment, guns are not going away. We have to protect our kids. I just wanted to clarify that. And I don't think, I get it, I get how people feel about guns. I have very, you know, my thoughts have evolved on this over time. I come from a country where nobody has guns. But I have a different appreciation after 20 years here. I have a different understanding. So I'm not pro-gun, but I'm pro-safe schools.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve items M2 through P8?
So moved.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to return to executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you especially to our students for being here this whole time. Have a good evening.